Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Religions and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the Consent Docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October 17th, 2022. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held September 13th, 2022. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures ratified 2223 in the amount of $8,787,405.8.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Thank you both. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Okay, item number three is consider the final plat of Freeman Office Park located in the northwest quarter of Section 24, township 10 North, range 3 West, being south of Southeast 34th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. Application by Richard Freeman, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 8-0. This is in Ward 1.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This site is located south of Southeast 4th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. The property is currently zoned C4 and it is vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop the property as one lot with a dental office. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site and access is provided by Eastern Avenue and Southeast 6th Street. In order to prevent additional congestion along Eastern Avenue, curb cuts will be minimized. They will be allowed for two curb cuts to Eastern Avenue at appropriate spacing. The site does not contain any FEMA-regulated floodplain and onsite stormwater detention is required. The Envision Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be neighborhood commercial. Land uses allowed in neighborhood include commercial include office, retail, and service uses. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan and because of the surrounding development and the plan's designation, staff does believe that this application does comply with the Envision Moore 2040 Plan. The site is located in infill commercial area, is zoned for commercial use, and because of this application's conformity with the Moore City Code and the comprehensive plan, staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, no curb cut on the 6th Street side?
The site plan I saw does have one curb cut onto 6th Street.
Okay, all right, very good. Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider the final plat, visible Plaza located in the southwest quarter of Section 11, township 10 North, range 3 West, being north of northwest 12th Street and west of Broadway Avenue. Application by Cal Isabel, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 8-0. It is in Ward 1. Oh, excuse me, Ward 2.
Mayor and Council, this site is located north of northwest 12th Street and east of I-35. The property is currently zoned C3 and it has two residential homes with outbuildings on the site. The applicant is proposing to remove the residential structures and develop the property with five commercial lots and a detention pond. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site and must be extended to serve each lot. Access is provided by Broadway Avenue and the northbound I-35 Service Road. Curb cuts will be limited along North Broadway Avenue due to the existing landscape median and ODOT driveway permits will be required for all driveways onto the Service Road. The site does not contain any FEMA-regulated floodplain and onsite stormwater detention is required. This property is designated in the comprehensive plan as employment mixed use. Developments within this land use category should be designed to mimic a campus or office park setting compatible with surrounding residential uses. Principal uses are office and flex spaces. This application was reviewed as to the conformance with the intent of the plan and because of the proposed land use, this application is in conformance with the plan and amendment is not necessary. The site is located in infill commercial area along North Broadway. This area has not seen development activity in the recent past. The property is zoned for commercial use and does conform with the Moore City Code and the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of this application.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Hey, Elizabeth, I just have one quick question. Do you know there is a large tree that's there? It's probably been here since Moore has been here. Do you know if they plan to leave that or are they gonna?
Unfortunately, I don't know that. The plat that was submitted does not show any of the landscaping that's to be removed. I do know that their detention pond is located in the southeast corner of the site. So, if it's located within the detention area, it could be saved.
You, okay, can you, maybe you just check with them?
Sure.
It's closer to Broadway. And, I don't know, I just hate for it to be knocked down.
Of course.
Anybody want to make a motion on this item?
We've got a motion.
Oh, do we? Do we have a second?
Yep.
Okay, let's call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider rezoning application number RZ-1027, located in the northeast quarter of Section 26, township 10 North, range 3 West, being south of southeast 19th Street and west of Eastern Avenue from C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District to C3 General Commercial District and approval ordinance number 12-22. Application by Diet and Joe Shelby, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 8-0. This is in Ward 3.
Mayor and Council, this site is located south of southeast 19th Street and east of Broadway Avenue. The address is 612 Southeast 19th Street. The property is currently zoned C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District and it is developed with an existing daycare called Kids USA. The applicant is proposing to construct in addition to the existing building to expand the daycare. However, daycare uses are not allowed under the C5 zoning, so the property must be brought into compliance with the Moore City Code prior to the expansion. The applicant is requesting C3 General Commercial District, which does allow for daycare uses. The property is currently served by public water and sewer. There is access from southeast 19th Street through a circular driveway for student drop off and pickup. There is no FEMA-designated floodplain located on this property and because the parcel is just under one acre in size, there is, detention is not required. The site does lie in emerging commercial area on the south side of southeast 19th Street. The site is surrounded by commercial zoning to the west and the south and there's higher density residential zoning to the north and east of the site. With the planned improvements to the southeast 19th and eastern intersection, we do anticipate there to be increased interest along the southeast 19th corridor to bring more commercial businesses to the area. The Envision Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be community commercial and uses in that designation include commercial uses and mixed use of local significance. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan and was found to be inconformance and amendment is not necessary. This application seeks to rezone a subject site to C3. This is really just a, largely a housekeeping item so the use can conform with the zoning and staff recommends approval of this application.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider rezoning application number RZ-1028, located in the northeast quarter of Section 23, township 10 North, range 3 West, being north of, north, excuse me, being north of southeast 12th Street and west of Eastern Avenue from C2 Commercial, excuse me, Neighborhood Commercial District to C3 PU Commercial District with a permissive use by paintless dent repair and approval ordinance number 13-22. Application by TJ Barrow, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 8-0.
Mayor and Council, this property is located north of southeast 12th Street and west of Eastern Avenue. The property is currently zoned C2 Neighborhood Commercial District. It is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to move an existing business at, his existing business is at 813 Northwest 27th Street. He would be closing this business and moving it to this site where he would construct a He would construct a new facility and it would be used for the paintless dent repair under the use unit classification of automotive and equipment light, which is only allowed as a permissive use in C3. The property is served by public water and sewer and access to the site is from southeastern Avenue and southeast 19th, or, excuse me, southeast 9th Street. There is no FEMA-designated floodplain located on the property and the parcel is under one acre in size, so there's no stormwater detention required. This area currently has a mixture of retail and service businesses, does include some automotive businesses already in the area. It does have a gasoline convenience store to the south and Napa Auto Parts Store also to the south. While this application would add to the automotive businesses in the area, it is not considered to be heavy automotive since there would be no paint boost or engine repair on site. The Envision Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood commercial are commercial centers of neighborhood significance and this application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan. Light automotive uses are allowed in neighborhood commercial only if the application can show compatibleness with retail and, or, sorry, compatibility with retail and consumer service businesses. The Planning Commission determined that this use was compatible with the surrounding uses as long as no outside storage of cars would be allowed and staff agrees with that and therefore there is no amendment to the Envision Moore 2040 Plan that's necessary. Recent changes to the zoning code have moved most automotive uses out of C3 by right and placed them under a use on review or a permissive use, which is why we're seeing this today. Permissive uses by definition are uses that may not be appropriate in all areas and each application should be viewed as unique and evaluated on their own individual merits. Usually caution is taken whenever approving such a use because, such a automotive use because these uses can allow for other uses that have been known to generate more noise and unsightly storage than a dentless auto, dentless repair. For example, a car wash and tire shops are also found in this use unit classification. However, there are times when proper site design, such as site-proof fencing, that residential uses may be sufficient to mitigate these undesirable characteristics. Planning Commission did feel that the site-proof fencing that was going to be required on the south side of the site was sufficient to mitigate any negative impacts of the automotive use and staff does recommend approval of this application.
So, since it's a permissive use, five years from now this company moves out, could then those more, those other uses step in or do they have to come back? Since it's a permissive, does it, does it carry over to the next owner?
Right, no, the, it, yes, the permissive use stays with the land, so any use found under automotive and equipment light would be allowed if this were approved tonight. And I should mention that the only residential that abuts this property is a zoned duplex property to the south that has been zoned for duplexes but it has not yet been developed.
So, would the no outside storage and the fence be attached to this as, as requirements?
Yes, that is allowed under the C3 zoning district.
But anybody that picks it up after this company, they would still have the site-proof fencing and no outside storage?
That's correct, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider the authorized purchase of 12 water source heat pumps for City Hall from Air Products Supply in the amount of $22,594 as the lowest and most responsive quote.
Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted purchase of 12 water source heat pumps to replace old units here at City Hall and with different tonnages ranging from 3/4 ton to 2 ton. We solicited from three quotes and this one was the most responsible.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider approval of an agreement with TAP Architecture for a design of a storage facility and restrooms at Buck Thomas Park.
Mayor and Council, on our capital improvements for city facilities, we usually engage TAP Architecture to, for design and any other services that we need for these projects. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, item number nine is consider adopting Resolution 40-22 authorizing the mayor, vice mayor, or the city manager to execute the agreement between the City of Moore and the Oklahoma Department of Transportation transferring a portion of Shields Boulevard ramp to the City of Moore.
Mayor and Council, items, item nine and item 10 are companion items in that they both are the result of the future construction of the QuickTrip located at, on Northwest 27th Street, just on the west side of I-35. If you'll recall, a traffic study indicated that the best access for the truck traffic to be able to get back onto I-35 southbound was that they should exit onto Moore Avenue, go west into the intersection of Moore Avenue and Shields Boulevard. And also for the safest way to allow that traffic to occur, recommended construction of a traffic signal at that location. Three-fourths of that intersection is under the jurisdiction of the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. And so, when we visited with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, item nine, basically they recommended that we enter into an agreement with the, with ODOT to where they would transfer from the center of the intersection, which they, they currently own south to I-35, that they would transfer 400 feet from the center of that intersection to the City of Moore and we would take over maintenance and then we could do as we please with, moving forward with the design and construction of a traffic signal at that intersection. One of the requirements of the agreement is that a resolution be adopted by the city council. And so, we would recommend that you adopt the ordinance or the resolution authorizing the mayor and vice mayor and city manager to execute the agreement between the City of Moore and the Department of Transportation.
Does that 400 feet stop short of the bridge?
Yes. Essentially, if you, if you drive down that area, there's a, the median has a concrete section. It's just about 10, 20 feet south of that concrete section.
Perfect, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second. Do you know, Terry, if, once we do all of this, how quickly will that transfer happen?
My understanding is that they've, they basically signed the agreement effective on, on their part that they approved it in, in October, so it could take, it could take action within the next month or so, I would believe.
Are, and what about the designing of that intersection? The point that I want to make here is that the striping on Shields Boulevard from 27th Street South and probably the north side too needs to be, needs to be restriped.
Yeah, one of the things that we're doing for Shields Boulevard is we've submitted a, a application to ACOG for additional, or for funding to go ahead and do all of the signals on 27th Street as well as striping on 27th Street from Santa Fe all the way to Eastern, which would address most of that. We could, what we could do is try to incorporate that section from Shields back to the south as far as that, but we would do the intersection itself as far as that.
The stripes are gone, so we need to.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, ACOG can help with that, but if not, we need to.
Yeah, if not, then, you know, we can try to maybe incorporate it into this.
Yeah, all right, great, thank you.
All right. Thanks for the motion and the second. Would you call for the vote? Is there any other discussion?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider awarding a contract, excuse me, for traffic engineering to traffic engineering consultants in the amount of $21,500 for, for the preparation of a signal, design, and striping plans for the Shields Boulevard in Oklahoma, or, excuse me, Moore Oklahoma Avenue intersection.
As I said, this, this would just simply award a contract to traffic engineering consultants to do that design of the traffic signal at Moore and Shields Boulevard as well as the striping of the intersection.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is approved. Item number 11 is consider authorizing the budgeted Buck Thomas Park football field sidewalk construction project in the amount of $41,000 utilizing the Silver Shark Construction Company for repair and maintenance contract.
Mayor and Council, this is a project that is very close to the concession stand and it will be taking care of a drainage issue where there is severe runoff and so we're going to be putting sidewalks and drainage area at that point.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Yes.
Red ribbon banner.
Item carries. Item number 12 is consider, or, December 101722, amending Part 8, Chapter 3, Section 8-301 of the Moore Municipal Code by modifying the length of time a structure must be boarded and secured to be considered a dilapidated building providing for repealer and providing for severability.
Mayor and Council, State Statute Title 11, Section 22112 defines what a dilapidated building is and our ordinance reflects that same definition and the same requirements. The statute has recently changed the length of time that a structure must be boarded and secured from 18 consecutive months, months to six consecutive months. This change to our ordinance simply reflects that change to the state statute. That's all that this does.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 13 is consider authorizing the purchase of 325 2-gallon trash receptacle liners and round tops in the amount of $175,800, or, excuse me, $75,800 using state contract number SWC-0111 and from Play and Parks Structures of Oklahoma.
Mayor and Council, this purchase is to replace all of the trash containers we have now that is like the Public Works containers and they will be uniform across all of our parks. That's, and we will be using the state contract to purchase those things.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you both. Yeah, I read that as, as 2-gallon trash containers and I'm going 2-gallon, but it's 32-gallon. Sorry about that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, item number 13 is consider authorizing the, or, excuse me, I'm in the wrong one. Item 14 is consider approval of FY-2223 budget supplement to budget additional funds donated to the fire department.
Mayor and Council, we are requesting your approval to budget additional funds received for the fire department from the Cleveland County Justice Authority for the purchase of three thermal imaging cameras. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
What was the amount? How much are those? What was the, what was the donation amount?
$10,000, they're about $3,500 apiece.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion to approve it. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 15 is consider adoption of Resolution Number 4222 of the City Council of the City of Moore, Oklahoma, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Moore Economic Development Authority, the authority in the aggregate amount not to exceed $3,570,000 in connection with the issuance of sales tax revenue note, series number 2022B, Municipal Capital Improvements Project. The note providing that the trust indenture and as amended using the authority is subject to provisions, excuse me, of the general indebtedness as supplemented and amended authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining, or, excuse me, pertaining to the sale of said note, approving a security agreement between the city and the authority pertaining to the deposit and transfer of sales tax revenue, ratifying and confirming an agreement of support between the Moore Public Works Consortium and the authority whereby the Moore Public Works Authority agrees to transfer balance revenues to the authority and containing other provisions related thereto.
Mayor and Council, this is a companion item along with numbers 19 and 22 on the agenda. This borrowing is for the station expansion. This allows us to go ahead and issue the purchase order for the construction and we need to amend our budget. This is what we need to do when we have a, a project that extends over multiple fiscal years. And so, this is a housekeeping item. The repayment source is the quarter cent sales tax. Recommend approval. Terry Hawkins and Chris Gander are here to answer any questions.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Any questions? Okay, if not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number sixteen is consider adoption of resolution number forty-three twenty-two, approving and affirming a ground lease agreement and a sales purchase agreement authorizing the execution of same, authorizing the employment of financial advisor and bond counsel pertaining to financing, and authorizing city officials to execute any and all necessary documents in connection with the aforementioned transactions.
Mayor and council, this is, item is, from the discussion that I've had with each of you in the, in the last month or so, we've got several other construction projects that are in the design phase that we hope to get geo bond approval for in the, in the next year or so. The desire of the council is to keep the millage rate at sixteen and a half mils. What this does is it'll, it gives us an alternate source of financing to ultimately be repaid by the geo bonds when we're able to issue them and maintain at that sixteen and a half mils. Again, Terry Hawkins and Chris Gander are here to answer any questions. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Please, second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item seventeen is a consent document, which item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenses for FY two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of eight hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars, seven cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a, a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote on the consent document?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eighteen is consider approval of a FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget supplement to the budget, to budget additional funds and related expenses for the southeast lift station project.
Mayor and council, we are requesting your approval to budget funds available from the previous wastewater treatment plant Phase Three project, and utilize these funds for the current southeast lift station project. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
So, one question. So, the, the projects at the existing wastewater facility treatment, we're not doing that project? Does that make sense? You said something that this was from the Phase Three of the original?
Of the original project back then.
And that project is not going, not going anywhere.
It was already completed.
It's completed, and there's money.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's all I was trying to do. Thank you, yes, second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions on these, on these items? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nineteen is consider adoption of resolution number two six one twenty-two of the trustees of the Moore Public Works Authority, the authority, authorizing an agreement of support, buy-in between the authority and the Moore Economic Development Authority pertaining to the Moore Economic Development Authority Sales Tax Revenue Note, series number two zero two B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and reconvene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number twenty is a consent document. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenses for FY twenty-two, twenty-three in the amount of two hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars, fifty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have, this is a consent document. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene a special meeting of the Moore Economic Development Authority.
Would you call for the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Lynn Lewis?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Item twenty-two is consider adoption resolution number twenty-five twenty-two of the trustees of the Moore Economic Development Authority, the authority, authorizing the issuance of its sales tax revenue note, series two oh two two B, Municipal Capital Improvement Project, the note, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed three million, five hundred seventy thousand dollars, for the per, for the purpose of financing, the acquisition, construction, and equipping of parks and recreation facilities to serve residents of the city, paying certain costs of issuance in connection with the reference financing collectively the project in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, waiving competitive bidding, and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiable basis, ratifying, approving, and authorizing the execution of other documents related to the transaction, and authorizing employment of financial advisor and bond counsel pertaining to said financing and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item twenty-three, consider adoption resolution number twenty-six twenty-two, approving a ground lease agreement between the City of Moore, Oklahoma, and the authority, and a lease purchase agreement between the authority and the City of Moore, Oklahoma, approving and assign, approving and assignment of the authority's interest in said ground lease agreement and lease purchase agreement, authorizing and directing the execution of the document relating to the transactions and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Mayor and council, this is the companion item to, agenda item number sixteen. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the special meeting of the Moore, Moore Economic Development Authority and reconvene the city council meeting. All right, thank you very much. The record reflected all the members that were present or still present. On item B is new business items from the city council or trustees.
Just a reminder, tomorrow is election day. Get out and, and place your vote. Let your voice be heard.
And I wanted to also mention that the early voting is a very positive thing. We were talking to some friends out at the, the VOTEC on Pennsylvania, and on last Saturday, they had over a hundred thousand voters go through.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Yeah, so, that's, that's been a very positive experience for my wife and I, but it's, yeah, it's pretty cool that they're morphing this election process thing into something that's a little more accommodating, so.
Brooks, with the current state of the economy and kind of the prices, on everything going up, I wanted to see if you would look, because I would like to give all employees a bonus this year. I know we've done a stipend in the past. Not sure what to do for the part-time employees, but for the full-time employees, I'd like to see if we could do a thousand dollars per employee. So, would you mind looking into that and letting us know if that's possible?
Sure, be glad to.
Perfect, thank you.
And the council, are we, are we?
Yeah.
Okay, no, not really, we aren't. It's well deserved. Yeah.
Hey, and I, I just had a couple, a quick things. After a two-year absence, we were able to have the Red Ribbon Parade, October twenty-ninth, and we had a great turnout. We had about, I think, forty-three floats that entered, and it was well attended. And I'd just like to announce the, the winners of that, the parades. We judged them based on some criteria, and for the school section, Central Junior High came in third, Central Elementary came in second, and Kingsgate Elementary came in first. And for Kingsgate Elementary, the Red Ribbon Committee were able to do a pizza party for the whole school. They have about five hundred students, so we're going to recognize them for that. And then, for the business side of the float entries, third place was Kids USA, second place was Kelslo's Fishing Guide Service, and first place was the Evans Agency State Farm. So, we definitely appreciate people just showing up for that and coming out and being a part of it again. It's been a part of our community for a long time, so we're really glad to, to bring it back. And then, later that night, there was Haunt Old Town. Haunt Old Town, I had to go to work, so I wasn't able to attend that, but I heard a lot of good things from it as well.
Mark, I've heard a lot of great things about the parade, so good job.
Praise, yeah.
Wonderful. Appreciate you.
Okay, and the other, from the city manager.
Yes, first, I'd like to congratulate the Police and Fire Department for all their efforts in making the Red Ribbon Parade in Haunt Old Town help make those successful events, so thank you for all of your hard work. And I'd like to echo the council about tomorrow, get out and vote. It's, it's always very important. And tonight is Betty Kane's last official meeting as our finance director, before she retires, and so...
Congratulations.
I think you're gone.
I was gone. So, congratulations.
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 And so, I would like to, I would like to thank Betty for all of her efforts, especially the conversion to Munis. That was a significant undertaking, and your leadership helped make that possible. Everything you've done as far as our audits during your time here, the clean audits and the ease of which the auditors have been able to come in and gather their data and get the reports. And then, also, it's, you know, it's, it makes my job a lot easier when you have a finance director that understands your approach. And I'm going to say, with very few exceptions, when Betty needed to come answer or ask me a question, she already knew what the answer was going to be. So, Betty, thank you for everything you've done for the City of Moore, and thank you for everything you've done for me. Congratulations.
Brooks, I just have one more, one thing. The businesses over at Twenty-seventh, the old, the restaurant in the Barnjill Estate, do we have a, when are those going to be demolished?
I know that the Fire Department and the, maybe the Police Department also want to do some training in those buildings before they're, before they're torn down, and they're working with QuickTrip to get that time coordinated, so probably within the next thirty or sixty days, so.
Okay, I hope that they can schedule their training soon, sooner rather than later, because getting calls about those.
Sure, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the, what the holdup is, but I know it's, it's in the works.
Okay, thank you.
I left off probably the most important part. Is the citizen forum for items on the agenda, is there any citizens that would like to speak? I guess I didn't, okay. Item twenty-five is executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain, certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet executive session to discuss the following items. Item A is discuss and consider a settlement offer for parcel number four for property acquisition related to the construction and maintenance of Southeast Fourth Street Railroad Underpass Project, and authorize staff to proceed as directed in executive session as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes B four and three oh seven B three. Do we have a motion to convene?
Make a motion, we convene the executive session?
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Hi, my wife's going to hike me up somewhere and lead me.
Oh, no, no, no hiking.
So, I make a motion that we proceed as directed?
Second.
Would you call the roll, please?
Oh, yeah. We have to do that first.
I like Louis' idea.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Lynn Lewis?
Here.
Now, I make a motion that the council proceed as directed.
A second.
Staff proceed as directed.
Staff, sorry, staff.
Second. Oh, Danielle, sorry.
It's, it doesn't matter.
We have a motion and a second.
Call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item twenty-six is...
So moved.
Thank you both. Would you call for the vote?
Who was the, who was the first? Okay. Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes, sorry.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
We turned pretty dysfunctional.